I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here to discuss and to strategize. It's the beginning of three sort of long days, so we just ask for your blessing as we as we think, as we come up with plans and as we communicate. Help us to communicate with each other effectively and agree to disagree when we need to, but we just ask you to help it to be a productive conversation. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Okay, first thing on the agenda today is the approval of the minutes. The minutes were sent out from the last meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Fred? Kathy? I have a motion to second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we need to adjourn. Tony? Julie Marie?
Yes.
Okay, we need to adjourn and go into a public hearing for the solid waste. So the council needs to make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Fred? Kathy second?
Yeah.
Okay. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, solid waste.
Simply to ask or answer questions, we're not going to make a presentation unless she wishes to. Do we have copies of the budget? I think those were sent previous, so we need a copy when we can apply it. I think the gist of the changes in the budget primarily related to pay increase. And I have one additional full-time person. And if there's any questions about that, I'll show the job.
What's the new full-time person there to do?
What's that?
What's the new full-time person there to do?
CDL driver.
Anyone have any questions? Any other questions? So we don't need a motion or anything like that to?
No.
It's just a matter of record that they were here.
Just offer the public an opportunity to speak and then close it.
Public want to say anything? Morning, Dan. Okay, so do we need a motion to close then? Do I have a motion?
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
No second.
Kathy second. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Tim, while you're here, can you talk about real quick the?
Yeah, at last month's meeting, Kate Diamond was in for the confirming resolution and failed to provide you with the proofs of application and the notifications to the tax units. We provided those to Tony, so those just need to be made a matter of record.
Tim, do we need to sign anything on the, any of these?
I don't believe there's anything to be signed.
Just pass it around?
It's a matter of record. I believe the resolution was previously signed by the council.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim before we move on concerning Kate Diamond?
Make a motion to approve?
Yeah, a matter of record.
To approve?
Just make a matter of record, a notice and then the notice.
I make a motion to make the documents. Second.
John and Fred? Any further discussion?
How's the market in recyclables, Tim?
It has improved, your cycles, it's starting to improve, especially cardboard.
In an improving economy, you should have a lot more of that.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of cardboard. We have two trucks that that's what they do, pick up cardboard every day.
Any further questions concerning Kate Diamond? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, we've got our means for breaking down plastic. They're working on recycling. I'm not sure how they're going to recycle it, but they're going to put it into. Some of them figure out how to break the plastic.
Now we have a motion to adjourn for the budget. I need a motion to go into?
We should go into public hearing for the budget.
Thank you, Fred. Do I have a second?
Second.
John? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any citizens have any comments concerning the Adams County budget? Jim, do you have any? You're the only basic citizen here. Do you have any comments?
You have copies upstairs over there.
I'm sorry?
You have a copy of the budget.
No. We haven't done the budget yet. I didn't think so.
If there are no further comments, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Motion to adjourn.
Fred?
Second.
Keith? Corey? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now do we need to have another motion to go into the regular? Good grief, can I have another motion now to go into the regular council meeting?
I make the motion.
Kathy? Fred? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now we'll go into our regular council meeting. We have Mike Brown with IT. Is Rex? Rex, are you the one presenting on that behalf?
No, I guess I'm stuck on that one. He's on vacation right now. So can you hear me okay? Are you okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see where he's in for additional for $78,000 according to the paperwork that I received. Now, in the IT meeting, he kept talking about 74,000. I also got a memo on that of him to address 74,000, 78. So, but let me just address the reasoning and then we'll go from there. As most of you are aware of, excuse me, we do work for the towns and the cities. And Mike tracks everything that's done and then he bills it for that. That money that we received was back into county general. So what he's asking for, he's getting ready to do the billings of the contracts for 21. And he's asking for money that's going to come in from those contracts this year to be appropriated back or to get the additional back out and into a line item that he has already taken and made or paid the expenses for. So the line item that you have on your sheet, 1,000 dot 35700 is what he's paid all these expenses out of. So he just wants reimbursed that additional and goes back into that expense item.
So the paperwork he sent to the auditor's office on 8/17 was for 78,000?
That's what I see on, yeah, on the formal proposal, yeah. So I don't know if he can reduce that or not.
We can re-
Or do you want to just approve the 78?
We can reduce it, we just can't go above it.
The government he expects to collect is $68,000 and he's already said that he had 8,000 that he's collected this year so far. It should be 76,000. So I think that's why when he was talking to us in the IT meeting, it was 74,000 is what he was talking about. So I don't know how that works.
You can plus them. I just, I don't know what the bills are that he's wanting. You know, there's invoices for 78,000, but you can plus them.
What does council want to do?
So this isn't really new money. It's just, right? It's money that is going to get reimbursed back to us? Am I understanding that right?
If I heard you right, I did hear that whole, what'd you say?
So it's not really new money? This is just being reimbursed back to us?
It's money he's going to collect.
It'll be recouped from the?
If you take and approve the additional now, of course, it would come out and transfer in. And then when the money comes in toward the end of the year or the next couple of months, it's going to go back to county general.
Okay.
See, basically.
We're just paying for stuff that we're going to use up.
Generally, the accounting, excepted accounting practice, if you expend something out of an expense item and you're going to get reimbursed for it, typically you'd make an entry and it would go into that same expense item you took it out of. But in current government, we can't do that. We've got to take it into county general as revenue. So he just wants reimbursed for that, what he's already spent. That's why the additional has to come out.
So I just said, just to make sure I understand, so when we, he pays it, does it also get paid out of the general, the county general fund, but from a different line?
He paid out of that line item that he wants this money to go back into, 1,035700, which is his, that would be the IT budget.
Oh, okay.
It's county general.
That just sounds like a different money. I make a motion to approve.
Fred?
I make a second.
John? Fred and John? Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have Brad with the highway. You're wanting 4,000 extra from the 1176, for the 1176 fund? I don't remember off the top of my head what that was for. Part-time?
Part-time.
Okay.
Part-time help, kind of a unique situation this year. We had our normal summer seasonal help and the one is not. Going back to school at this time and we still have plenty of work to do, so they can only be seasonal or summer help for so long and then we need to go to part-time. So like I said, kind of a unique situation, you know, we weren't, we didn't have it. So that's why we're here to ask, just to get the additional. And that would cover till the end of October. And there's still plenty that can be done, part-time help.
And this is the 1176 MBH?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you have enough to cover social security with this 4,000 extra? Do you have enough in your social security line item?
Yeah, we, yeah, it was figured out to have enough, you know, to cover.
Okay.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve.
Fred made a motion?
Second.
Kathy seconded. Any further discussion?
Actually, I do have one question. So there's an MBH and MBH restricted.
Yes. The MBH is what we use to pay all the salaries and, you know, all that kind of stuff. The MBH restricted is for products we put out like stone. You know, we can use it for plowing snow.
Materials?
Yes, basically, yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Have a good day. Are you coming, are you coming later? Okay, all right.
Yay.
Yeah, probably. Okay, so John August is hopefully on his way, so let's keep moving on. We have the Adams Public Library, the council board appointment. Does she resign?
You know, I have that. I don't know if Kelly planned it or not, but it's kind of a simple thing. And I think, I think everybody got the email from Kelly.
Yeah, I saw it.
Sylvia Lawson is no longer on the library board. And Kelly and the library board is asking for Jeanie Akins, resident of Geneva, to fill Lawson's unexpired term. You would just need to vote on that?
And at this time, that term goes to the end of the year.
My only question is, so like those spots, are they, are they regionally filled? Like is there a southern, central and north? So she was filling a specific regional spot in the south?
Yes. And this person only wants to be on until the end of the year at this time? And then she'll reevaluate to see if she wants to serve another year.
Is that appointed to a year term?
It's the council's appointment.
I mean, is it?
I think it's a four-year, four-year term.
Only you need to sign this.
Yeah.
When the four years ends this year, or is she just using this as a stock gap?
Term ending this is the very first one.
I move that we make that her, whatever. Maybe if we make her the appointment, there you go, Jeanie Akins.
Okay, Corey?
Okay.
Fred seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Yvette, who made the motion to second on Brad's highway decision?
It was Fred.
Me.
Do we need to sign any of these that she sent? Tony?
No, that's just.
That way she needs it without it's on, you know what I'm saying? So that will miss. But I believe that you and I have to sign it and then Jeanie.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we don't sign this?
All you do is sign. I don't know.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you need to sign that or fix it then, or?
Okay.
I'm sorry. Did you call it quits after this term?
Okay. Julie Marie, do you want to go into your?
Not yet. Mark said that he wanted to.
I just, somebody made that mention to her, too.
Okay, thank you. Tony? Do you have a report that you want to do? While we're waiting?
Hold on.
It was a couple of weeks ago. Somebody told me, so I don't really remember, but it's mentioned it might be.
Judge Conrad went to switch with Mary. I remember. On slate because I don't know why. And Mary said that's a bad word.
I think we have one more.
I saw it there.
Additionals, right?
Like your thought process.
Yeah. And they're just?
That's what's to hire.
Was he? He's going for my church.
Do I have a motion concerning the case manager additional appropriation for community corrections? This is out of their user fees?
For adding a new one?
Are they adding a new one?
No, it's because of the years of service.
Oh. I see.
So it's kind of a standard, right?
Yeah. They have like a matrix that the state gives them, right?
I think they go on probation, probation scale.
So it's just a motion to approve? Okay, I make a motion to approve.
Fred made a motion?
I'll second.
John?
President John?
Yep.
Can you change your name for me? John? Seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Do the transfer for our office. We have a transfer, $500 out of office supply, out of travel and into office supplies.
I'll motion to approve that.
What?
Transfers are good to me, so.
That's, that's a little interesting because Neil Potter had to come and, because our safe broke. He had to get into it, but we had some, you know, stuff in there. Asbestos flew everywhere inside of it. I mean, it's crazy. And he, when Neil was up there, he said that he was going to let Corey know what happened because he was going down to see Corey Max for something. So that's, that's why we have to transfer that money so we can get a new little safe, so.
Corey made a motion. Do I have a second?
Nope, Fred got it.
Fred?
Who, Fred?
Corey and Fred. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Yvette, you vote on these things when like you don't go so just fine, you don't have to.
Tony?
Three salary orders?
Okay.
We have three for the jail. Conrad Dyer, Luke Robey and Bo Butler. By weekly amount is 1396 and sheriff is here. If you have any questions on that. And so those are all new irons?
Correct.
And right on the matrix?
Right?
Right on the matrix?
Correct.
I make a motion to approve.
Fred? Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Tony, any further business?
I believe that that is all that I have. And I know John's here now too, so.
John, come on up.
Here's that one. Here's the transfer. Here's the salary order.
We're running ahead of schedule today, John. Things are coming over early for us.
Okay, well, you're welcome. I'm here for a signature, five signatures from Yvette. We have five grants that we are applying for, actually. There are two different grants, but there are two in one and three in another. They, most of them are things, well, actually, they're all things that we apply for every year, including one of them is the salary max that they do with EMA. Half our salaries are covered with a grant. Then there are three in the LEPC, which has to do with our hazardous material group that we have. So I hope, I was delayed and I, well, I just did not forward the council explanation of what they were. I emailed yesterday and I hope I copied everybody. I hope you saw that. If not, we can cover that quickly. In fact, it won't take long at all. Grant one is for $35,264.06 and that is the salary reimbursement grant. Half of the salary for EMA is covered through a grant every year. And this is for this year's grant. We were just paid the last year's grant, I think, within the last month. So, because at the end of the year, we have to file whatever was paid and we got to prove that was paid by W2s and that type of thing. And then it takes us long to get it through. But this is for this year's grant, which will be paid sometime next year. Grant number two is, is a competitive grant off the same one and it's for $18,000. And that is, we are, EMA is going to purchase, would like to purchase four walking portable radios on the, on the stage system. And ours are 15, 16 years old now. And they are coming to a new system in the next number of years. It could be 10 years, could be five, whatever, whenever they do. And, and these new ones, now they come out with, will work on the new system. The old ones will too, but there are some, some things that, that having the new ones will, will help. And this is a grant. We don't get the grant, we have to find another way in the future to do this, so.
That covers, that would cover the cost of those radios?
Yeah, $18,000 for. Grant number three, now we're into the LEPC. That's for $7,820 and that's for our exercise for next year. We are required to do an LEPC exercise every year to get our funding from the LEPC, so.
Is that the exercise that you invited the council to? Is that what you?
No, actually, what we invited, you do get invited to that. But what we invited before, by the way, just got approved by the state's legal department. So we'll be doing it as soon as we get by this patch of COVID, I think. And that has to do with our hazardous mitigation plan. We have to update that every five years. And that's the one, I know Fred, you asked about it when I was here, about when it would be. Soon as we get, we got full approval and we've hired somebody, as soon as we get by this patch where we feel safe to getting a lot of people together, we'll be doing that. Again, that may be two months that we start. We have all of this year and next year to finish it, so. So we're going to make sure that we're, you know, everybody is somewhat secure attending. Grant number four is for $14,075. They allowed us to do this year, this, this year, not sure if we'll get it. It's for commodity flow study for Adams County. In my 16 years, we've never done one. You don't need to do it very often, but you hire a firm and they hire, I'm assuming, a lot of college kids. And they sit at corners throughout your county and they read the signs on the back of trucks going through on their load and you get an idea of what actually passes through your county. You know, we have somewhat of an idea, but this gives you an updated version of, you know, during every day, what kind of bad stuff might be passing through that you need to be aware of and make plans that if, if you had an accident of some kind that you at least knew what you were dealing with ahead of time. And again, if we get the grant, we'll do it. If we don't get the grant, we'll try again. And number five is for $8,948. That's for additional training, mid-level training for our police and fire departments in the county. And also for conferences that they attend. We pay for part of their conferences through this grant through LEPC. No money out. We get the grant. We help them. We don't get the grant. Then they're on their own. Exactly right. So those are the, those are the five. Commissioners have already signed it. And so I just need Yvette to sign it if you guys approve that, ladies, and we'll move forward.
Did you see, John, the, the one request that I was asking you about? Where it said the county match was 58.3? Was that just a typo?
And I did, and I saw, this is a county form and Barb does some of them, Emily does some. Emily wasn't aware. She put the exact same amount in match as there was for, there is no match.
Okay.
She, she filled out that part of the form wrong because I couldn't figure it out. And I looked closely and that's, that's what it was. She didn't know that. She's not there. I haven't talked to her yet, so we'll, next year when we do this stuff, we'll. But anyway.
So if we get these grants, we'll have $75,000 basically for the stuff you described?
For these things, yeah.
I make a motion to approve?
Fred?
Do we approve all of them?
We can. Is that what you want to do?
To approve all, all the grants requested, yeah.
Okay. Fred made a motion? John? Fred and John? Any further discussion or questions?
I had a question on your communication devices.
Yes.
How many units are you getting?
Four.
And how are they to be distributed?
We will keep them in, in the EMA office. These are for our.
Standby.
For staff.
Well, I have one and, and I have two part-time. They have one if we have something going on that we can communicate. And then we have one that is, you know, we can lend out or whatever.
And they're dependent upon the cell towers for transmission of?
Yeah, this is, these, these are, are with the system that the state has.
It's the same as a long?
Same as, I think Dan, Dan has applied for that one of the grants to do his department, I think.
Well, I was thinking, in case of an emergency, you need to coordinate.
Yeah, they go on all of our single gears.
But if something happened, say sabotage or attack?
Sure.
There has to be some means of communication.
Well, we have, Dennis, we have two systems. The 800 system, which this goes to, which is the new one run by the state. We, we still have some radios on VHF and, and that can be used. And we also have a place at the jail and we have equipment for the ham radio guys. So we have radio wise, we have three ways currently. One that we use mostly, the 800, and the other two can be used and we have the, the ways and means to do that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, a motion to second. Any other questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And I apologize for that because she, I had noticed that she put, she put the same one out there. That'd be 100% match, which wouldn't, wouldn't be the grant.
I knew you were involved with that.
Yeah, they saw that side of it.
Say 14.
You never know what's going to happen.
Julie Marie is.
The first one for the commissioners is the resolution, the initial county disbursement plan for these ARP funds. And then four resolutions for the council to consider after that resolution is passed by the commissioners. Four separate projects. If Mark was going to discuss the need for them and the details as to why those are needed, the figures in there are simply suggested now.
Ta-da.
The figures that I have in there only suggest them now when they are phased along some preliminary bids that have been received or some insight that needs back in the generator. So that's why those figures are in there as they are. But since Mark's here, I'll let him go into more detail as to what's needed and what's needed to be discussed.
Hey, Julie? I forget, is it, there's three and a half million in there now. Is that, we get another three and a half million next year, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so the three and a half million in there was the first distribution created, you passed an ordinance creating that fund last spring, so you have to have a spending plan in order to spend those funds. When you spend those funds, payments are filed directly with that fund and are paid directly out of that fund. So you have to document the expenditures and file for each expenditure category with receipts so that it's an auditable file. In case we do have an audit, we can show that those expenditures were for permissible use of those funds. So next month, Julie Marie's prepared an ordinance for the council. We advertise, this is the ordinance that the commissioners are intending to take action on and it just lays out the categories for expenditure. And the first item is for the H, for the chillers and the air handling equipment in this building. We've got quotes to do that, which exceeded a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In order to do that, you'd have to come up with money either, either out of county general or out of your rainy day fund. I don't think there's sufficient money in the Q funds to do that. When we reviewed this, did the research, as long as you use the magic language, that that is for increased air handling, social distancing, air purification, you can use ARP money to do it. And so that's why we have set that out in the ordinance or in the resolution by the commissioners. Category number one A says to implement heating, ventilation, cooling improvements to county-owned buildings, including not limited to the courthouse and county government service complex, together with all necessary subsystems modifications made necessary by such improvements to facilitate substantially improved air exchange, purification, and filtration in said buildings. So that's one of the projects that the commissioners believe we can use those funds for. And then that would be a direct benefit to the county in that you don't have to use your other county general funds, Q funds, rainy day funds, when you can get that project done. We're hanging on by a shoestring right now with the air ventilation and conditioning system in this building. There's only one chiller operational right now. And so we have got quotes from SEO engineering to get us the specifications that we need to go out to bid on that project. In the meantime, I want the commissioners to adopt a spending resolution to use ARP funds for that so that we wouldn't have to come out of other county funds. So that's why that project is listed. The other project listed is for a generator for the service complex that also would keep systems up and operating, including the air exchanges, the facility use of the building. Keeps our vaccination clinic going, refrigerators, regardless of the condition of the electrical grid. At this point in time, we haven't gotten quotes on that yet, but we wanted to include that as a possible project to improve this building. The second or the third category is to adopt a county policy to provide for sick pay and paid leave for county employees exposed to or suffering from COVID-19, to maintain health and safety for the county workforce. That is one of the approved expenditures under the ARP regulations that you can use those funds to pay for sick time for individuals to be off work. And so we put that down as one of the categories. And then the final one was to provide funds for legal consulting, engineering, and technical to develop and implement response plan and projects proposed to use of these funds. Any time that we spend or that engineering spends, any consulting spends is our reimbursable expenses out of that fund. There's no reason for county general or for the county to pay for those, pay for that if we can get reimbursed. And so that's why we've got the four categories now. This resolution can be amended at any time. You can add projects. Obviously, that's something you're going to be considering. I mean, you've got three and a half million in there now. You're gonna get another three and a half million next year. You know, the sheriff's department is interested in doing the project and we're still waiting on the final rules to come out to see if there's changes to that that would allow us to use ARP funds for the project the sheriff has to do.
Mark, did we, I know like last month we had talked about hiring a firm. Did we do that? Did we enter a contract with the firm?
We have, we have just been basically getting some advice on hourly, on an hourly basis. We haven't signed an engagement agreement. Some of those firms wanted substantial money on a monthly basis. We have not done that. We've done the research, but we've talked to them and I'm confident, you know, we've, we've gone through that rule. It's a hundred and fifty-page document. It doesn't really start to mean anything until you get to about page one hundred and thirty. And so when you start reading it and then we talk to the consultants, they don't know any more about it at this point than what, what we've come up with.
As I said, I mean, when you're paying a consulting, for somebody to consult on something like that, what are you really paying for? Because I just don't, I guess I'm not following exactly why we would need to pay somebody for that, aside from, you know, people who are.
Some of the consulting firms like Barnes and Thornburg, they've got a lot deeper bench than what we do. And so they've got attorneys that are specializing in researching this, you know, on a daily basis. So it takes a little more time.
Are they just looking at it and telling you what you can spend it on, though?
Well, helping you develop the spending plan. And so we've looked at other counties' spending plans and borrowed language from them and said, hey, that looks reasonable. Then we modified it to fit our needs. And then we've done the research and the regulations themselves and it looks like, hey, that's, that's permissible. And so that's, that's kind of how we're handling it.
Is there a timeline for having a spending plan? And then what's, is there, I assume there's a timeline to spend the money as well?
Yeah, at the end of 2024, you have to spend it.
And what about the spending plan itself?
The spending plan you adopt and modify as need be.
So there's really no requirement, but, or you have one, but it can be changed at any time?
It can be changed for a minute.
Spending plan by the end of 24, you can have it till 26.
Twenty-six, actually. And they keep changing it. You know, and we, you know, just like they did with Pierce. You know, at this point, when you read what it says you can use the funds for, and that's all laid out in paragraphs A, B, C, and D of the resolution, and that comes right out of the act. And it's very much tied to just direct COVID expenditures in response. And so we've had some of those expenditures, but not, you know, a whole lot.
I can't seem to find the email, but it must be the one that included that. But it seems like there's a lot of, a lot of versatility there to me with what we can spend it on.
There is, but there isn't. There are a lot of loopholes and they keep coming out with interim final rules. Interim final in the same phrase for some strange reason. And they keep changing some of the standards and criteria.
You sent the email, didn't you?
I did.
The oxymorically named final draft, yeah.
Yeah, interim final.
Interim final.
Yeah, okay.
And they keep coming out with them. So Fred, to address your concern about consulting, we're not hiring anybody. We are not going out and incurring a bunch of fees for the county. Mark and I are doing all the legwork. We're doing seminars. We're reading up on information as it comes out. We're going to the Department of Treasury. What we're talking about when we say consulting is we come across something that we feel like will be beneficial to the county, but we're not a hundred percent sure. So we make a quick phone call up to the Barnes and Thornburg Municipal Law Department and speak to them for ten minutes. That's our consulting. That's about the extent of it.
If, in category C, and this is kind of the catch-all, and this is where it gets, it seems to, it seems to be very broad. It says for the provision of governmental services. But then it says to the extent of the reduction in revenue of county government due to COVID-19 public health emergency. And so relative to revenues collected the most recent fiscal year. Tony's done that calculation and we really haven't had any reduction in revenue. So you take that entire category C and throw it out. It says for governmental services, but only to the extent you had a reduction in revenue. We've not had a reduction in revenue and you can't spend under that category. Problem that we're running into. Now, I expect at some point in time, they're gonna come along and take that out of there. And so now, now you can use it for other governmental services and it doesn't have to depend upon reduction in revenue. And when you talk to some of the folks around the state that have been working on this and talking to Barnes and Thornburg about it as well, most counties like Adams County, the smaller counties, have not had a reduction in revenue. Counties that have had reduction in revenues are the ones that had, you know, gaming, casinos, had a lot of hotels and, and counties that were really impacted by, you know, people not showing up and spending money. Now, they've had a reduction in revenue, but most counties like Adams County just didn't. And so now, does that mean you won't this year? I don't know. It seems like there's a delayed impact for a lot of this stuff. And certainly, you know, you get a substantial portion of your funds from income tax revenue, so it remains to be seen how that plays out. But as of right now, Tony's done the calculation.
Well, to be fair, Bree spent about half a day doing those calculations. It was quite time-consuming and the government is requiring that to be done at the end of the year, again, all the way through 24, I believe. That calculation has to be done. We basically take out all federal revenues that you had received in what, in a nutshell. And we actually gained. We did not lose, we gained. And one of the conferences I was at, SBOA, said that probably most counties would not see a revenue loss, with the exception, like Mark said, of some of the casino counties and such. So I don't think we're going to see any revenue loss. We actually gained.
So Mark, the plan that we, hold on one second. The plan that we have to come up with, was that all the documents that you sent at two o'clock yesterday?
I think Julie Marie sent you county coun, those county councils.
Yes.
I don't know, did you send them the resolution?
I sent the commissioners' resolution as well, just so you can see. The master resolution for the commissioners. And then the council resolutions, you're not going to pass those, so I wanted it today. So I want to give you a test, so you can review them and compare them to what the commissioners will pass.
Okay. So we will table this and talk about it next month?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
This is just more of an FYI. Please give me feedback as to the worrying, the worrying type of question.
And again, these things, even when they're passed, are amendable. Even when, even when they're passed, they're amendable.
Correct.
Yes.
It's all fluid, I guess.
Yeah.
Just adding, we have paragraph C about the government loss. Most of the Sheriff's Association is looking into it, because most of the counties are rural, small counties, not showing a loss. So the Sheriff's Association is reaching out to Senator Brown, Senator Young, to see if they can give any foresight or put any pressure on the treasury to take some of that worrying out of there, to give, to open up the strings a little bit, because it is so restrictive and like that. For our, for our government project, after Mark explained, for that one clause about showing the loss of revenue, it doesn't fit. Otherwise, it would have fit. So most counties are like, are, most counties have not spent hardly any of their money yet because they're waiting for verification. So I hope that it does happen and that I can come before the commissioners and council with a couple projects, for sure.
With the things that you've mentioned so far, I don't know if there's something's coming around, but like what, what's that total right now, then? We have the chillers for a couple hundred thousand or more?
I need to put down, propose three hundred thousand dollars to H-back, three hundred thousand dollars for the generator, twenty-five for consulting, I believe, twenty-five for the health department.
The health department or was it the sick?
Sick pay, yes. I think I put down fifty thousand dollars for sick pay. But those are subject to your discretion, obviously. That's just a starting point that was placed.
Yeah, because you'll have to advertise for that for your October meeting, come back. So once the commissioners, and I don't know if the commissioners will have bids in yet or not on the chillers. You know, they may. But, you know, if it comes in higher than that, then we'll have to, have to revisit it. Because we did, we added some increased air handling UV light fill room to that project to make sure that it crawled up.
When we get bids for that kind of stuff, then? I assume we get like three bids and some references as well?
Yeah, it's competitively bid. Anytime it's over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'll get competitive bids. And that goes out, and so we could get, we could get ten bids, we could get two. But it's advertised and so anybody, any qualified contractor can bid on it. And they have to meet the specifications.
Anyone have any other comments or questions? Corey, you look like you're gonna say something.
No, I mean, I guess we're not deciding anything now, but I like the original idea we had talked about with looking at more of the infrastructure side of things. You know, the internet broadband, sewage, water. The internet really piques my interest, because I think that's just the direction that the world is going these days and people want to come, high-paying jobs want to come, but they can't if they don't have good internet. A lot of people work at home now. I just think that's the direction things are going and we, so that, to me, is really interesting. And I get a little bit worried that if we're not careful, we'll just kind of nickel and dime it away. It'll be gone, you won't have enough to do a big project like that. So I just kind of want to keep an eye open and keep a big project in mind and be really careful about what we do spend until we know.
Do you know broadband's in section B?
Yeah.
Waters were broadband. So, you know, I've, I've talked to Colton Pickle at Economic Development. I know they're kind of looking into, into a project like that with community fiber solutions. So hopefully, we can all kind of get together and maybe get on the same page and see if we can leverage some of that money for, for a broadband project. But that, that's gonna take some time.
So just out of curiosity on, on that topic, not to go crazy on it, because it's somewhat speculative, but I agree, I agree with you. I'd like to see that, that happen. But because there's been a lot of mention of it at the state, federal levels of, of, you know, increase in better broadband service, I mean, I almost feel like there's gonna be, if there's not already, some type of mechanism to, from the state or from the federal government, that we would get money specifically for that. Is there, does anybody know? Is there any type of mention of that anywhere at any?
There are other grants out there for rural community broadband projects. And we might be able to leverage those other grants with some of this money.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of, I mean, if we, I'm fine if we, some of this money went to that, if we so, so deem. But I think it could probably take more than this would ever come up with.
I think you can, you can see sometimes where you get funded resources for that. And this could, you know, be match money or it could be, you know, seed money to help, help fund a larger project. Because it's gonna be, you know, those projects get expensive.
Yeah.
And you have to be able to demonstrate that you are in fact serving an unmet need for broadband in areas that are underserved. So I think you've got to be able to demonstrate that. You can't just say, hey, we're gonna spend a million dollars on broadband and then not really improve anything.
Right. Yeah, because if you're running, and I don't know what that looks like specifically. Because if you're running, and I don't know what that looks like specifically, but if you're running fiber, for sure, that's expensive. You're talking about, it's just like your power lines running up and down the road, so.
They actually have speed requirements in the broadband. In other words, you have to provide a certain speed for it to qualify. So it can't be, you know.
Until a lot of it's terrible.
It's got to be good.
A lot of places.
And I think it was, I thought I saw 10 megabyte or something uploads even, something like that. I mean, it was pretty substantial above what people are getting on a regular basis now. But from an economic development standpoint, I think that a project like that has appeal in that it can benefit maybe the broader cross-section of the community and then still have, and have, you know, a positive economic effect on the whole county.
And businesses having that access.
The commissioners have discussed coming up with a form that anyone seeking a project to be funded by ARPA, and I think maybe Mark and Julie are working on a form that entities or whomever can fill out, turn in, and then see if it matches all the criteria. Is that correct, Stan?
Yeah, I think, you know, that's something that Mark and Julie have really been working on. And I guess on a couple of issues, in talking about broadband, that's a really interesting issue on how to attack that because it's not something you can just throw money at. And there are other, like the state, in their last budget hearings, did pass grants that were available to increase broadband. And then there's that this available that could be used for broadband. The economic development, Colton, actually, we actually did a survey throughout the county, and we left it out there for a couple of months maybe even. And we didn't get a ton of responses. And a lot of the responses we did get were like from BK to Monroe, Auburn, and Geneva, instead of the people out of the county.
Hey, one thing about that survey, just so you know, I actually tried to do that survey, and it didn't work.
Yeah, so it was kind of a, there were probably only about 200 responses. But one of the things, I'm the guy that evaluated it for us. You know, it gets kind of tricky because if you have areas that are served by DSL, you can't have another company just come in there and overserve that area if it's already being served, even if it's not at good quality. So it gets kind of tricky on how you provide broadband in underserved areas, you know. Whether you look at MediaCom, whether you look at Comcast, whether you look at putting towers up. It's just, it's kind of a difficult situation to address. But yeah, to answer your question, there is more money out there other than just this money. So it's just kind of a matter of how do you do it? Who needs it? How do you do it? But, you know, kind of on the other issue, like Tony said, we're working on ways for people to address that money who have requests to use that. And, but I guess kudos to our team as far as Mark and as far as Julie and Reeve and the auditor's office. You know, to address your question about consulting firms, they are our consulting firm. And they've been, the Bushes, they've been working hard to find their way through the weeds on this one. So I guess I'd really like to commend our team right here for being able to help us find our way through without using consultants.
Yeah, I agree. I've spent some time at the auditor's office talking about that stuff, and they've all done a really, really good job.
We are webinar-ing it to death.
Well, we're all probably pretty excited to watch.
Especially Lori Rogers with the revenue loss calculation that was, we wanted to watch it again.
Okay, so we will talk about this next month?
Yes.
Do you have anything else you want to discuss? Okay. So Tony, we've covered everything on the agenda.
Well, you have other matters properly presented, which I think Shannon has another matter.
Oh, okay, Shannon.
So a situation has come up in the last couple of days that I have not had a chance to officially talk to the commissioners about, but since you guys were already here today, I felt like I at least needed to bring it up. So right now, at Golden Meadows, we have one nurse on staff, and she's the director of nursing. She takes calls. She's on-call pretty much full-time, 24/7. We've had a lot of issues with that. It's been a huge point of stress for her. She's very overwhelmed with the amount of calls that she has to manage even when she's not at work. So myself, the director of nursing, and the administrator at Golden Meadows kind of talked it out, and we came up with a plan. And what we decided would be best is if we forego a full-time position on first shift that we call ANA, which is activities and appointments, and we replace it with a third shift full-time QMA, which is a qualified medical assistant. Like I said, I just wrote the job description yesterday because this just kind of happened and came up yesterday. So I apologize that I didn't get anything to you guys before now. I have sent it to the commissioners, and I am going to discuss it with them today. But I need some direction on what to do wage-wise with that position. I have done research on what I think it should be. But obviously, the decision officially lies with you guys. So if you want to talk about it more, great. If you're not ready, I understand that too. But since we're here, I felt like I at least needed to bring it up.
So we don't have to make a decision today, correct?
I mean, my life would be much easier if you did. I am not going to lie to you because we just, that position is so overwhelmed with the amount of calls. I mean, on vacation at nighttime, two o'clock in the morning. I mean, she basically works, and I'm not saying that she works 24/7, I'm not saying that, but she's the only person that is responsible for handing those, mailing those calls. So having a QMA on third shift would solve our problem of having to hire part-time people for third shift to cover the other shifts throughout the week that our one full-time person doesn't cover, as well as be able to work out an on-call schedule to kind of relieve some of that stress factor for that position.
So at this point, the commissioners haven't approved?
Correct.
So we can't do anything at this point until the commissioners approve the position?
So.
Right, so we can't do anything.
But if you guys decide today, we could, I mean, we're going to be here. I don't know if you can do that or not.
In budget hearings?
I don't know, are you allowed to do that or not?
Still public meeting.
Has to be advertised, but I guess this isn't advertised either.
I mean, can she hold on one more month so we can get this information or not?
Are they fully staffed there?
No, it never has been since I started here.
Has there been, have there been two people leave here recently?
The administrator left, and we have one that's outgoing.
That's part of the problem too, I assume, understaffed.
Yeah.
And the third shift portion.
So we're going to replace one position and add one position?
Correct.
So the one that's going away, what's the salary of that?
The one that's going away, the salary is $1,255, which is an NE2. But the position that we're going to add, I'm recommending an NE4, which is $1,511. So there's a difference there, but we are taking away one to add another. I'm not just asking for a full-blown new position, period.
Right, so the, I know it's not approved or anything yet, but the qualifications of this position will be, or always you have to have some medical.
They have to have a QMA certification, which, it's a qualified medical assistant. So it helps them know more about medication. It helps them know more about how to take vital signs. It's more involved than a CNA is. It's kind of like double the schooling essentially. So we would be able to work out an on-call schedule, and the QMA would be able to answer some of those calls and field some of those questions to take the pressure off of the DON to be on-call 24 hours a day, no question.
So basically, on-call situation would be for the weekends, I assume?
Not necessarily. I mean, because she got a call, yes, over the weekend, you know, at two o'clock in the morning about a resident there. But, you know, it can happen at two o'clock any morning. It's not just a weekend situation.
Well, the QMA would be working in third shift though, right?
Yes, the QMA, so right now at Golden Meadows, there's only one full-time nursing assistant for third shift. So that's four 10-hour shifts that that person covers, and there's three 10-hour shifts of the whole week that are not covered. That in the past, we filled with part-time staff, and we just, we have such trouble filling it with part-time staff that, you know, even when you have a call-in from your full-time person, you might not have somebody to pick up. So the DON might have to come in and cover. The office manager might have to come in and cover. The administrator used to have to come in and cover. So it's, we're trying to solve like five problems with this one position out there.
Sure.
Stan?
Just kind of a side note as far as salary. When we hired Danielle, we did look for an administrator that was an RN, just kind of to help address this issue. And her salary was higher than the current administrator by about $6,000 because of having an RN. Our current administrator does not have an RN. And so that has kind of both created the difference in salary plus the additional need to have nursing people available.
So right now, you need to get something approved with the commissioners, and then you need to come back to us to get the money approved, right?
Yes, pretty much. And I just, like I said, I didn't realize I could come during budget hearings, I guess. So I at least wanted to tell you.
I'm not saying, I'm asking, I guess, can we do that or not?
Yeah, no, I think we need to do something with the commissioners first. I don't think we can do anything on that by today. Well, like, could I come back later today or tomorrow?
So we couldn't preemptively approve the compensation level? Can we not do that?
I don't see a way, procedurally, to do that properly without waiting until next month. Because we're going to have to get the commissioners to approve it and then do it as part of a regular meeting because we're about to adjourn. This regular meeting for budgets.
Could we set, I guess, position levels? Now pay for, the pay for position levels? I guess that's already established.
But the commissioners haven't, they haven't given approval yet to make this position.
I'm just trying to find a way to move it.
Can we approve an NE4?
And the council would have to just approve it and change the salary ordinance next month in order to put the funds in the budget. But I think you could probably, you know, provisionally approve, you know, the hire. Or subject to, obviously, the commissioners have to approve it. They can provisionally approve the hire and set the salary range. That way, the commissioners have direction and they know what they can do. So you can come back next month and then change your salary ordinance to add a position.
So we could approve an NE4 level contingent upon the approval of the position by the commissioners? To me, that sounds like probably a good idea, I think.
Just to ask on that four a little bit, so four is typically your, that's like your standard entry level for a regular clerk. And I don't completely understand the position. So, I mean, you feel like it's pretty comparable to, you know, it's not manually, because those are NE1, 2, and sometimes 3. You feel like it's more like.
It's more skilled than an entry-level position for starters. So, I mean, I could make the case for a 5, but I didn't think that that was appropriate based on the salary research that I did. But it, I mean, you have to have more certifications and more qualification than just walking in off the street with a high school diploma. You can't do that in this position. So yes, I think it's comparable in an apples-to-oranges kind of situation.
It would be nice if we could see the job description and we can see what your compensation is. I would like to see it in front of me and read it as opposed to just hearing it.
Yeah, and I have all of it, and I'm happy to send it to you guys. But like I said, this just came up yesterday at two o'clock. I was scrambling as it was to get it to them, so I didn't have a lot of time to get it to you guys. But I figured since you are here, I might as well come and at least ask the question because we're kind of in a pinch.
I mean, are you guys pretty on board with this at that point, or what's your disposition?
I think we have had discussions about making that staffing change heavily, so.
It just seems wise to me to at least preemptively approve this, and, I mean, nothing's set in stone, you know.
Because the short-staffed people are leaving.
Yeah, I mean.
And it's the health and well-being of the residents there. I mean, it could be a real safety concern.
I mean, it's going to take me a month from start to finish to fill this position, most likely anyways. So, I mean, I completely understand that procedurally, we have things we have to follow. But, I mean, if we push this out another two months, we're going to be, it's going to be tough.
So do we need a motion to preemptively, we do that and then?
You can provisionally approve the range, and then I think that puts in place what the auditor's office needs to do to bring back paperwork for next month. And the commissioners and Shannon can pursue the process to see if they can get somebody at least that can fill the position.
So this is a part-time or full-time?
Full-time, yeah.
Yeah, it's replacing a full-time position on first shift that currently pays $1,255. Plus, like Stan mentioned, there's the difference in salary for the administrator for not having an RN. So that's kind of where we tried to make up the money, so we weren't just coming out full $1,511.
So I would make a motion to provisionally approve an NE4 level salary for?
QMA.
A QMA position contingent upon approval of, by the commissioners.
Okay, I have a motion by Fred.
Does that suffice?
I think so. Yeah, subject to commissioners' approval on hiring. They'd have to, they're have to interview, and they'll have to decide, you know, who to hire. Did he state a range?
NE4. NE4.
Do I have a second?
One second.
John, seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And you'll get us.
Yes.
Okay. Any further business?
I want 10 minutes before, after.
Yeah. Okay, any other business? Any other things we need to discuss? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Why don't you do adjourn?
Fred, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Kathy? Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I only heard one aye, but okay.
Yeah, I'm just considering. Having heard no objections.
Fred and Kathy.